We'll now call the roll. Commissioner President Wyatt.
Present.
Commissioner Vice President Webb.
Present.
Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Gray.
Present.
Commissioner Dr. Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Hembry. Commissioner Hembry. Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith. Uh, Madam President, we do have a quorum. I will now call the, uh, role of the administration.
Thank you.
Mr. Rashawn K. Hassan Superintendent.
Present.
Mr. Cameron E. Cox Chief Financial Officer Board Secretary. Dr. Mark A. Williams Deputy Superintendent Chief of School Management. Dr. Elizabeth Philippatos Chief of Student Services. Dr. Jean Gordon Chief of Instruction and Programs. Mrs. Carlotta Jones Chief of Human Resources. Mr. Rashawn Lamont Hill Chief of Marketing and Communications. Dr. Danielle Mastro Giovanni Chief of Equity and School Improvement. Mrs. Khalifa Shabazz General Counsel. Mr. Jeffrey A. Morton Assistant School Business Administrator Assistant Board Secretary. Uh, we do not have any student commissioners present. Welcome to the preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six budget meeting of the Plainfield Board of Education. Members hope that you will find this meeting interesting and informative. We thank you for taking the time out to attend. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the media and public consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and that the advance notice required therein has been provided to The Courier News to tap into Plainfield on Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, to be advertised on Friday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and also provided to the Plainfield Public Schools District website, Plainfield City Clerk, Police Department, and Public Library for posting. Madam President.
Alright, thank you. Good evening again, everybody.
Good evening.
Alright, so before we get into this budget hearing and have the superintendent and our chief financial officer present the budget to us, the preliminary budget, we are going to honor our varsity boys' basketball team. That is why they're here. We are going to get to it. I'd ask that our commissioners meet me at the podium, and yes, everybody please stand. I shouldn't have to tell you. None of us should have to repeat this because the entire state is on notice.
Absolutely.
Alright, Plainfield is not to be messed with. Right, guys?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
I see you chose violence today. You did. Alright, so, we know that you guys just won the state championship, right? Before that, it was the county championship, and before that, it was the, the conference title, and it was the Christmas tournament, and you've just been winning all your games. I mean, that's what it is, right? Alright, so we are here to honor your entire season. Obviously, you are number one in the state, state champions, and soon you're about to play in a national tournament, which we believe that you're gonna take, but get your game face on and get ready for that because the work is not done. Um, I'm glad that Coach Gordon let you guys come tonight and that you're not at practice. He gave you a day off, I see, maybe, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, but we wanted to make sure that we honored you guys. Today is a budget hearing. It's not like our official board meeting for the month of March. However, this is fresh, and we should celebrate you guys today, next week, and every week after. I mean, we're gonna just keep celebrating you guys because you showed us how resilient you are and how much hard work you put in on the court and off the court, and we want to show you guys how proud of you we are and let you know that we continue to support you. So we do have a resolution here that I will read um, to you, and we have copies of the resolutions for any of you and your coaches or your parents who may want a copy. Okay, so make sure you get these. They framed them in nice red things. It's cool. Alright, so, I'm gonna read this resolution. Oh, good. Okay. And I gotta put it up like this because I'm a little short. Alright, proclamation to honor, two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-five Plainfield Boys Varsity Basketball Team. Whereas, the Plainfield's, Plainfield Boys Varsity Basketball Team had an extraordinary and historic season culminating in their victory as New Jersey Group Five, Group Four State Champions, an unparalleled feat that has secured their place in the Throne High School Basketball National Championship Tournament presented by Gold Level Sports Entertainment and the NBA Players Association. And whereas, the team has demonstrated unwavering commitment to excellence, hard work, and perseverance throughout the season, overcoming challenges both on and off the court, and earning the remarkable distinction of being ranked number one in New Jersey by NJ.com, the first public school to do so in twenty-five years. Whereas, the historic achievement is a testament to the team's resilience and teamwork, making them the first in thirteen years to win the Christmas Tournament, Conference Title, County Tournament, and State Championship in a single season, bringing immense pride to Plainfield. And whereas, under the exceptional leadership of head coach Mike Gordon Jr., the team's success has been driven by more than just athletic ability. His mentorship, vision, and dedication to player development has shaped these young men both on and off the court, supported by his dedicated coaching staff, assistant coaches Ronald James, John Griggs, Deron Montgomery, Andre Dabney, Craig Jackson, and Anthea, Anthony Scambino. Did I say Scambino right? Shimbino. Shimbino. Along with youth coach Amir Gordon. Where is the youth coach at? Alright. Up there where he belongs. He's always up top. The players have not only excelled athletically, but have also embodied discipline, respect, perseverance, and unity. Their commitment to both sports and academics exemplifies the true spirit of scholar athletes, serving as an inspiration to their peers and the entire community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Plainfield Board of Education and the entire community extend our deepest congratulations to the Plainfield Boys Varsity Basketball Team for their historic accomplishments and for representing Plainfield with the true Cardinal pride at the highest level. And be it further resolved that we commend every player. Number zero, Isaias Jackson. Number two, Kamai Lowry. Number three, Marcus Richards. Number four, Jarrell Calhoun. Number five, Micah Gordon. Number ten, Kayon Kirkwood. Number eleven, Devin Thomas. Number twelve, Caden Terrell. Number thirteen, Randy Williams. Number fourteen, Gabriel Harrison. Number fifteen, Tyler Hunter. Number twenty, Jarrus Bertram. Number twenty-one, Josiah Nguyen. Number twenty-three, Rashawn Williams. Number twenty-four, Alameen Watkins, and number twenty-five, Najai Hines. For their dedication, sacrifices, and courage in the face of adversity, their achievements embody the essence of scholar athletes and serve as an inspiration for future generations. And be it further resolved that the Plainfield community wholeheartedly supports these young men, their families, and the entire athletic department, knowing this is just the beginning of an exciting journey. We are proud to champion their continued success and eagerly anticipate the next chapter in their remarkable history, their remarkable story. This is attested and signed by Rashawn K. Hassan Superintendent of Schools and Hanay M. Wyatt Board President. Congratulations, Plainfield Varsity Basketball Team. You guys are gonna take, your coach is gonna take this proclamation, the one that's framed. Again, we do have copies if you all want them, but I'm gonna invite any of you players who wanna come up and give a few remarks before I let your head coach speak and your assistant coaches. So if any of you wanna share, don't all jump at once. Let's go, Micah. You're standing right here. Come on, Najai.
Thank you, Plainfield. Thank you, Plainfield. Thank you for having us. Just thank you and your continued support with us throughout the whole season. Thank you.
Thank you, Plainfield, and yeah, I love you guys.
You gotta close us out, the team. You can't just say, "Thank you, Plainfield." That's not gonna work.
I'm not getting, I'm not giving the speech, bro. Well, I just wanna say I appreciate all y'all. Thank you for believing in us when nobody else did. Thank you for putting all this money into us, and I'm happy that we was able to get you out of the championship and put on for the city. We appreciate it.
Set it down, set it down. Wasn't prepared to obviously give a speech today. But I wanna thank the administration for, you know, standing behind us. I wanna thank the players for giving their all, their dedication, their sacrifice. They sacrificed a lot of time, um, a lot of hard work. I said it before, I'm a maniac, and, um, they gotta deal with me every day. And they did it. They did it. Um, we put it all together before the season started. I would say, almost a year ago, um, we wanted to, wanna do the trifecta. So if you guys don't know, the trifecta was um, to win the conference, to win the county, and win the state championship. And we accomplished all three. Um, and it attests to these guys, like I said, hard work, their dedication, their sacrifice. So, thank you to the community. Um, I'm gonna shout out Coach T-Bone, Terrance Johnson. A lot of people don't, you know, know what he does in the background. But there's point in times where coach can't be coach, meaning I can't be around. And, you know, between himself and his brother, Antoine Johnson, they hold, they hold these guys down. Obviously, we all know what he does in the community with the YES League and the other programs. But our bond has been twenty-five-plus years strong and, and counting. You guys probably don't know, but he's gonna, you know, coach for us in this upcoming event, the throne, um, being that now coach can't, you know, be coach. And with his continued work with these young men, I know we'll continue to be great. I wanna say thank you to my wife, um, over these last few years. I spend a lot of time with these kids, which obviously takes me away from my family at times. So she's the backbone to everything that I do. She's the backbone of this family. And she treats every one of these, these young men like, you know, they are kids. So, wanna say thank you. I love you for, you know, always supporting me, um, in this journey. Wanna thank my coaching staff. Coach Jackson been rocking out since day one. You know, we always on the road together, taking these kids all over the place. Coach Griggs coming in and dropping knowledge on these young men. Um, Coach Deron, I coached Deron here at high school, so, um, now, you know, I can mentor him and, you know, teach him how to, you know, work this game. You know, maybe when it's all said and done, he'll be the next guy, you know, stepping up, sitting in his chair. And then, you know, we got Coach Shimbino, who, you know, came into our family, um, a few years ago, and his connections are out this world. Coach Dre, who's constantly mentoring our young men and, you know, training them to the, to the utmost, to the highest level. And then, you know, Coach Pitt is not here. We had a swearing-in with the police department. So he's attending that right, uh, right now, but he is, um, you know, the driving force behind, you know, what we do. Um, he's the one that actually, you know, schemes up our defenses. Um, and if you guys know, we've been holding teams to forty-five point-two points a game, which is probably one of the premier defenses in the state of New Jersey. Obviously, the kids are doing it, you know, with their hard work, but we've been, you know, scheming it up. Thank you to the administration, you know, Mr. Cox, you know, getting this lovely gym together.
Team effort.
Yeah, making it work. Thank you to, um, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Cole, um, constantly supporting us, and I wanna thank you guys for always having our backs and, you know, allowing us to, you know, travel to events and supporting us financially. I wanna thank the parents. Without you guys, we can't get this done. You know, getting your kids from point A to point B, five thirties in the morning, you know, waking up, making sure your kids get there, get this extra work in. You are also the driving force behind, you know, what we done and what we are going to continue to accomplish. If I forgot you, it's not that I, you know, meant to. Nah, that was my last one. So, nah, so, it's one thing, um, obviously, the youth coach is my youngest son. Uh, he reminds me so much of when I was an assistant coach. I used to have Micah, um, constantly in the gym. Micah still, you know, has a lot of strides to make, um, as of right now, he's a very good basketball player. So we used to make Micah, you know, shoot free throws to end practice. At this point, Kai now has to shoot free throws to end practice, and he's also holding these, you know, young men accountable in practice. And he's also being mentored by Coach Deron, you know, making sure that he works during practice. Last but not least, I wanna thank the overall community. Um, I tell the kids, whatever gym we walk into, we turn it into our gym. So, the community has turned every gym that we walked into this season into the Rico. So I wanna say thank you for always making every gym our home gym. Alright, so I wanna say thank you to the city of Plainfield administration, everybody. And thank you for this proclamation. Everybody have a good night.
Can we have the board up for a picture?
Thank you, Ma. I love you. And just so y'all know, my mother used to bring the oranges at halftime and make sure these jokers was hydrated and good going into the half. So thank you, mother. Love you.
If you don't follow me on Instagram, follow me, WBF Micah, y'all. I love you, mom. I love you, mom.
I love you, mom.
Started to with like.
Were you doing a report?
That was the report.
Oh, alright, alright.
Yeah, I ain't got it.
No, that's her, that's her dabble. We're gonna start in the meeting.
You don't have nothing to.
Nah, that's the part.
Alright, see you later. Yes, next week.
When you feel best, both.
Yes.
Good evening, President. Mister Vice President, Commissioners, community members. I want to welcome everyone out to our, our budget presentation for this evening. Tonight, myself, I along with our CFO, Mr. Cameron E. Cox, will be presenting the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26. In tonight's presentation, you will receive an overview of our enrollment trends and projections, charter school enrollment, revenue analysis, amongst other things. In your package, you'll have a copy of the position control roster along with the details from tonight's presentation. You also have a document which is entitled Budget in Brief. That document provides a high-level summary of some of the major initiatives that we're presenting in tonight's budget. Members of the community who are at home, you will also receive or be able to access, rather, tonight's budget presentation along with the Budget in Brief document, which will be attached and provided for your access inside of the Board Doc system. At this time, I'm going to call up our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Cameron E. Cox, to kick us off with tonight's budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan, for, as they say, bringing me out. Alright, it's that time of the year, everybody. We look forward to presenting a responsible budget on behalf of the superintendent and his collaboration with the board, as well as ensuring that we align all of our actions strategically with the five-year board-approved strategic plan. Plainfield Public Schools, our mission and partnership with our community, are accountable for creating a safe, inclusive, nurturing, learning environment for all students to achieve their maximum potential. And as Mr. Hassan starts, we generally like to kind of show you where our, where our district is trending from an enrollment stance. So that way, we see why it is that we made some of the decisions that we made based upon the students that we need to service. And so, a cursory review, you can see for our general enrollment here in the district, we've taken a slight decline from the twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment for general enrollment compared to where we're projected without, you alright back there, Nick? Okay. Compared to where we're projecting our enrollment to be for next year. Our chart, oh, I got the, okay, thank you. For our charter school enrollment, you'll see that that trend steadily is climbing. Plateaued slightly, but it is still every year, year over year, climbing. And additionally, our preschool enrollment has taken a little bit of a decline, which will again be explained in detail a little bit later. We've had some changing trends when it comes to our students that receive some level of special education programming. That hype was realized for our last ten-year trend between the 2019, 2020 school year. And I would like to really give a shout out to Dr. Elizabeth Philipodleton and her team. We've really, really worked hard on ensuring that interventions are identified. Students that need additional assistance, they get that assistance as soon as possible. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it helps us ensure that our students have access to the proper, fair, and appropriate education. For that charter school enrollment, we wanted to give you, just to itemize that, because that is always one of our budgetary drivers, is how the enrollments in our charter schools here that the city services, their enrollment goes up. As you can see, over our last ten-year trend, ten years ago, we were at a little under twelve hundred students. Next year, we're projected a little under thirty-one hundred students. So there's approximately two thousand student increase over the ten-year trend period. And we'll see that as a key driver as we move later on, to see why our budget has gone the way it has for this school, for this next school year. I want to bring it to the first highlight, because it will be asked, I'm sure. We have not, the school district, I want to be very clear, the school district has not raised local levy taxes for the portion that comes to the school district in six years. And so, with this budget, we currently have a two percent increase listed here in our revenue projections. That two percent increase equates to five hundred, a little over five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that five hundred and thirty thousand dollars comes out to be forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents increase over twelve months for the average assessed home here in the city of Plainfield. Mr. Gray has asked previously, and he's also asked tonight before we got started, we talk about our aids and our special revenue accounts. You can see, and we'll really dive in deep later in the slideshow, that all of those reimbursements, all of those special revenue funds have gone down. And there's obviously an explanation for that behind with the federal trends prior to the most recent federal election, but also the expiration of what's claimed or is deemed as the COVID-era federal funds. With that notwithstanding, our total revenues for this year stand at three hundred and thirty-eight million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Alright? And I just want to draw your attention here once again to the general tax levy. Previously and for the last six years, our tax levy, and again, I want to be very clear, the portion attributed to the school tax levy, if your taxes have gone up in the last six years at your home, it is not based upon an action of the Board of Education. So the school tax levy for the last six years has been twenty-six million, eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. In this proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, we're proposing the two, the full two percent, with the difference being five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Again, that's the full two percent of the tax levy. Debt services, because we're getting to the end of some expiring debt, has actually gone down slightly because we have less interest to pay, giving the total tax levy of twenty-seven million, six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And so I want to kind of dive into a scenario here. So tonight, I want to say Cameron E. Cox, lifelong resident, has two options that he's asking the board for, humbly and respectfully. To ensure that we can continue to do the great works that we have accomplished here in the last few years, to ensure that we can uphold the moniker of moving Plainfield Public Schools forward, to ensure that we can continue to invest in the strategic plan as outlined and approved by the board. The two percent we've already budgeted for, what we are asking the board to consider and/or approve is two additional scenarios. We have not raised taxes, we have not raised local property taxes on behalf of the Board of Education in six years. As such, with the expiration of additional school aid, S2 expiring, so districts, SDA districts like Plainfield to ensure that they got their proper level of adequacy when it comes to a funding formula, that is also expired. We did receive a slight increase this year from the state, but that is the end of it. The big chunks we've seen in previous year, forty-two million, thirty-eight million, those will expire. They have expired. Last year, the state encouraged SDA districts like Plainfield to take advantage of any bank cap, to the tune of, we had much more than we're asking for here. They were trying to encourage SDA districts to ensure their proper adequacy, not only for their educational spaces and places, but they also know that the SDA is not building any buildings or making any renovations the way they once were. So they were really encouraging school districts like Plainfield to take that initiative, talk with their Boards of Education, and attempt to raise their local tax levy to get to a closer level of adequacy. And so scenario one includes the twenty-five, twenty-six tax levy of two percent. It also includes another fifteen million, which is included in our bank cap. Year after year, for the last few presentations, you've always told me how many hundreds of thousands of bank cap are expiring. Every year, we don't access that. And we are just trying to ensure that we have the adequacy, adequacy, excuse me, necessary to ensure that we can truly move Plainfield Public Schools forward and give our children all the opportunities that they deserve and need. And so for scenario number one, out of the two is the highest one. We're asking for the two percent increase as well as the fifteen million dollars in bank cap. That would increase both, based on the city's evaluation of total property in the city of one billion, two hundred and seventeen million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. That would change the tax rate for school district tax levy to three point four five, four one percent, excuse me. With the evaluate, evaluate, the average evaluation on a home being one hundred and nine thousand and sixty-eight dollars, the average tax impact would be a total, just for the school, of your total taxes would be thirty-seven hundred and twenty dollars. Now, with that being considered, what is the average tax increase? That would equate to one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that is more than a hundred dollars a month additional on your tax bill. And I know that is not an easy pill to swallow, nor is it easy as a taxpayer here in the city of Plainfield, as a homeowner, an easy one to deliver. But it is my job to give you where we stand and what steps we have the option to take and we should take in order to be able to deliver all the services that we need. And if that scenario is a bit difficult to swallow, as I know it is, because it was hard for me to deliver, scenario number two, request the two percent tax levy increase plus nine million dollars. Same thing for the total valuation of all property in the city. It's not as high as three point four one as a tax rate for the school district. It drops it down to two point nine two. Same average assessed home, the total attributed to the average assessed home would be thirty-one, excuse me, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. And that would be an average increase of eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent to the average assessed home here in the city of Plainfield. That is our request of the board. We will get into what is covered when Mr. Hassan gets into his portion of the presentation. Alright? And so, Mr. Gray, I know this is something that has been a target of focus for yours, and so we just want to clearly outline it. The preschool budgets have gone down slightly with the revisions. We're going to show the overall revisions and how that calculates and some of the things we've talked about with the board in terms of where that money goes and how it's attributed to enrollment, just like our funds here for our general fund. And as you see, literally every column is a zero or a negative, right? So a lot of our special revenues are significantly decreasing. A lot of the title grants, being a Title I district, we are literally being informed that either we know you will not get more than this because they've already worked out something in DC, or we're planning to tell you, you need to, you need to plan for at least a seventy, seventy percent of what you're normally receiving. And so that is what is indicative of those numbers that you see there. Obviously, a hundred percent of ESSER funds are going. That sunset in October of this year, and we filed all of our final expenditure reports relative to those final funds that we had. And so for our expenditures, listen, every, you know, there's a big debate in the state of New Jersey when it comes to costs of living increase. That often comes up when we get into our CBA negotiations and we try to ensure that we give people a cost of living increase and adjustment so that they can afford to live as things get more and more expensive. The same thing happens here in our school district. And so, our CBA goes up, the cost to deliver instruction goes up. Oftentimes, we get some reductions, but when we get those reductions, it's generally attributed to being able to reallocate those funds to being able to cover them out of another expense line. And so, we believe it went over very well last year when we talked about salaries and benefits. This was a point, as we interpreted previous budgets, how we had money left over to be able to make sure we can pay settling CBAs and whatnot. And this is a playful banter towards my friend over there, Mr. Costin. How you doing, sir? We're going to stick with this trend to show salaries and benefits, both pre-pass-through money and post-pass-through money. And so if you can just take a quick look, pre-pass-through money for what we're est, what we're projecting for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we look like we only spend fifty-six point six percent of our total budget on salaries and benefits. And as Mr. Hassan and I have both said on multiple occasions, the average district is somewhere between seventy-two, seventy-four percent, and some as high as eighty-two percent, really depending on the region of the state in which they reside. And so we thought it would be helpful, as the board continues to make very vital and important decisions relative to ratifying and approving us to, you know, advertise this budget before our final budget hearing in April, that you truly see, once we take that pass-through money, anything that rests here, like non-public security aid, charter school payments, once we take that off the top of our operating expense, it gets down to the nitty-gritty and shows what salary and benefits truly represents here in our district, which projected for twenty-five, twenty-six budget is standing at seventy-five point four zero percent of our total operating. And so our appropriation snapshot shows how we cover that percentage out of not only grants, but the debt services that we talked about previously with our expiring debt, and then our local funds generated to cover our total expenditures and appropriations for the year for twenty-five, twenty-six. So long-term debt, as we said, we tried to give you an extended trend. Generally, we only do three or four years. We thought it would be important to point out, as we announced previously, we did complete a very aggressive Apple refresh when it comes to our one-to-one iPad device initiatives. Additionally, we purchased MacBooks for all of our teaching staff, so that there will be seamless integration as they go ahead and deliver instruction to our students. And so, we kind of looked like we had two payments, but Mr. Cox thus far has been very responsible with the money. So I don't want anybody to think we paid Apple millions of dollars twice. What you see here is the previously approved budget, the last payment on Apple. And then what we did was, we knew what the first payment on the refresh was, but we took advantage of buying out those devices through a third-party vendor that the board previously approved to get the market value of those aging iPads and MacBooks that we had. to get the market value of those aging iPads and MacBooks that we had. And as you see at the bottom, our first payment on the new refresh was at one point two five million dollars, but we actually realized one point two six two from the third-party vendor. We only went into negotiations to complete this refresh under the auspices that it would cover that first payment, because again, we can't responsibly make two payments to Apple in the same year. And as you see, they helped us with some structuring, Apple has a new education arm and they're financing all school districts. When they're doing mass purchases, no longer receive any interest. So they've actually, Apple has created a, they have created a financing arm where they do their lease purchases for school districts doing mass purchases with zero percent interest. All right. And so, we continue to not only move our district, but we continue to move our facilities forward. And so, last year, we made an aggressive investiture to ensure sensory compliant playgrounds at four locations throughout the district. All four of those locations are up and running and students are enjoying them, particularly as we now start to see that seasonal spring change in mid-March. You know, we might get a little chilly morning, thirty-four, thirty-six, forty degrees, but by midday, when the kids are ready to go outside, we're, we're in the sixties and sometimes even in the seventies. And so our students are truly enjoying those four previously installed locations. And, and we continue to maintain that aggressiveness. And so, there were one or two schools that, prior to changing this idea of going to sensory compliant playgrounds, that had just recently had renovations of their playgrounds and it really wouldn't be prudent to upgrade those. We need to let those age out because those investitures have already been made. And so the last three playgrounds that we need to complete will be first, the Charles H. Stillman Elementary School Playground. Next will be Emerson Elementary School Playground. And then lastly will be the Plainfield Early Learning Center Playground. As you can see, we have full renderings currently for those locations. This is currently, I'll just go back a step, I know it's slightly cut off. This is the rendering for the Stillman Playground. As you see that corner, that's where that side entrance, rear entrance is for Stillman. We know, we don't get to exact size when our architects complete the renderings, but we got very close to what the footprint and layout will be of that. And the next one is for the Emerson Elementary School rendering. Capital projects, we, we've been super, super aggressive over the last few years. We have, due to being fiscally responsible, we are not as aggressive this year as we may have been in previous years, but we are still accomplishing items on our long-range facilities plan that help us to continue to move not only our, our district, but our facilities forward. As you can see here, I've already mentioned the sensory playground, that investiture is one point one two five million dollars. We're gonna really get into the nitty-gritty with this one, Mr. Hassan gets his component. But we have an eight point eight million dollar investiture into the district administration and community center renovations. And I am very eager to hear Mr. Hassan really talk about all the great things that will happen at that location. We have heard our community members loud and clear. We know we've had some heating, some cooling, some issues as weather change in some of our locations, particularly some of our older locations or locations with older unit ventilators. And so, we are leveraging our buying power as a part of the ESIP and contributing local funds to ensure that we can do new unit ventilators at not only Cedar Brook K eight Center, but as well as Evergreen Elementary School. Last year, we previously approved the Phase One of our CTE wing, and that is eagerly, um, excuse me, aggressively moving forward. We have, we're at the point where we're really ready to put the bow on top of the beauty. And so approval of this two point two million dollars to complete that wing with Phase Two of the CTE wing will really move it forward. And, and we are, we are, we, we take all of our stakeholders at not only our schools, but our events. We realize that as crowds started to draw for our larger events at Hubstein, that the visitor's side was not as ADA friendly. There was a hill, there was an incline that someone with some assistance could get, and it wasn't steps. But it wasn't as, as compassionate and as friendly as it should be. So we are going to install on the visitor's side a retaining wall and create a, a, a less steep ramp to ensure that anyone who, who needs some assistance as they travel to the visitor's side to watch one of our events, whether it be a football game, track event, or otherwise, flag football, they have that compliance. And so that's an investiture of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All right. And we have not forgot about our capital maintenance and our twenty-year cap, board-approved capital maintenance plan. If you recall last year, we really did a, a focused job on, and, on beautifying our common spaces and, and some of the areas of our schools to just improve the overall culture and climate and sure, and, and ensure that we're staying in alignment with our twenty-year capital maintenance plan. So this year, we are doing the classrooms of Plainfield High School. We really want to make the Plainfield High School learning environment welcoming for our students there. Additionally, because of when we built Washington Community School, we elected last year not to touch that other than the spaces like the food service area and a few hallways. But this year, we are going to be painting similarly the classroom spaces in Washington Community School. And then, it was a little too many small projects to list, but we've committed another million dollars to satisfy the continued effort and progress on our twenty-year capital maintenance plan as we move forward. And so, I believe, I'm gonna read this slide and then I'm gonna bring up Mr. Rashawn K. Hassan to go ahead and, and bring us home. And so, educational efficiency and space optimization. Would you like me to read the narrative, or you gonna take it from here, sir? All right.
Thank you.
Little prayer before the sip, I appreciate that. Oh, man. Right. So, uh, so, uh, you know, I looked around at the faces in the room when Cameron talked about the two tax scenarios. Kind of hit the air out of them a little bit, but, um, you know, my grandmother told me that there was two things that's certain in life, right, death and taxes, right? And we talk about our school districts and being able to move them forward. We have a responsibility as a community to also provide what's called, if you will, to cover our local fair share. And over the last few years, I think we've done a really good job of leveraging alternative revenue sources, leveraging federal funding that we receive. But we've all heard about this over the course of the last two years, that that fiscal cliff was coming. We also know that there are some school districts, whether in the state of New Jersey or nationally, who've actually taken a step off of fiscal cliff. Fortunately for us, we've done a great job of building up our reserve accounts, capital reserve, maintenance reserve, that's allowed us the opportunity to do some of the major improvements that we've been able to complete in the district. But in planning for a, a budget, we're not just living in the current fiscal year or planning for next fiscal year. We have to be thinking to five years ahead. So we, we've all heard about what's taking place in Washington right now. Right, there's conversations about dismantling the Department of Education. We know what impact that will have to a lot of school districts, a lot of communities. And as we think through the future of public education, we also have to be conservative and protect the reserve accounts that we've built up. And to simplify that for anyone who's listening at home, and to make it very simple and plain for us, we cannot put ourselves in a position where we're constantly making withdrawals from our savings account to balance our checking account. Because at some point in time, the funds run out. And what we call that here in Plainfield Public Schools is simply a structural deficit. So the proposal that we're presenting this evening allows us to avoid a structural deficit, but it also allows us to protect the current reserve accounts that we've built up to the tune of roughly thirteen point seven million dollars. Because we don't know what the future holds and what is on the horizon for the next fiscal year, right? So again, thank you, Cameron, uh, great job, Mr. Cox, as always, framing up our financial picture for the community so that they understand where we've come from, where we are now, and where we're looking to go. So, I'd like to take a moment and just thank the board for all of the support that you've provided during this year. We just received, uh, last week, I think two weeks ago, final approval from the Department of Education to close on the Buff properties. Now, something that the board approved, it's been a, a, a long time coming, but we are ready to move forward and close out. So after twenty years, again, the district is implementing a comprehensive plan to relocate the administrative staff from the valuable educational space at twelve hundred Myrtle. So for those of you who know, our district office, it really is a school, right? There's some people in this room that probably attended the old Jefferson Elementary School when it was located there. Keith Costin, thanks for raising your hand and letting us know. Still educating our babies, look, look at that. But in all seriousness, every time we utilize educational space as adults, we're taken away from valuable space that could be used to educate our children. Right, so we are all aware of the demographic study that was presented to us in January. It shows that we are severely overcapacity in the number of our schools. And we've, we've put some things in place to help us relieve some of that pressure, and procuring this property is one of those steps. So just wanna highlight for the community what our plan is. That is for us to repurpose the Buff One location, which is located on, on Seventh, to be utilized as the administrative and community center. So for the board members, if you see in any of your detailed packages, the name Plainfield Early Childhood Learning Center, that was a placeholder, just so we would not be saying, referring to the property as Buff because we don't own the rights or the name to that. Know that the committee will work on, you know, official name for that. So that is our plan, and we will be moving forward with opening up the, the Buff Two location to help us continue to provide support for our, our pre-K families here in the city of Plainfield. So Governor Murphy has announced an initiative to move forward with universal pre-K, which I think is absolutely amazing. I stood before the board a few times, and I've shared with you that I truly believe that I'm having solid pre-K programs is really the game changer and a difference maker to, to move our students ahead. So, with this approval, we will be allowed to open up the Buff Two location, and that allows us to service up to a hundred and fifty-five students in addition to the students who are currently being serviced and supported in our PSD programs that are actually located in some of our district elementary schools. So in totality, our school district will be serving roughly two hundred and twenty-two pre-K students in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in addition to the more than one thousand students that are currently being served by our providers. So I like to say that I believe we are ahead of many other school districts as it relates to the governor's initiative for us to be all-in on pre-K education. I wanna share with the board also that this is not gonna cost us anything as it relates to our general operating budget, except for the renovation of that Buff One location so that we can convert it into administrative offices. All costs associated with operating our, our pre-K programs that will be handled from out of the PEA special funding and revenue that we receive from the state of New Jersey. Uh, moving on to some of our major programs and initiatives. In the, the last few years, the board has been absolutely gracious in supporting the initiative that we've presented to you all. And we've done a lot of things over the last few years, and I just wanna remind everyone what some of those things are. We've gone full-fledged with our esports programs and initiatives. Uh, we've expanded our CTE programs, upgraded facilities, purchased new, uh, Apple devices for our students and our teachers, we beefed up professional development, we've hired more professional school counselors so that we can have that ratio of one professional school counselor for every one hundred and fifty students. We've hired intervention teacher assistants to provide that support to our tier-three students across elementary schools. We've done those things and we've made those investments. Now, as we look at our programs and initiatives, we're not coming to the board saying, give us more money to, to necessarily bring more things online. We wanna make sure that we are fine-tuning and sustaining the investments that have already been made and supported by the board. Now, there's a little tweak, modifications that have to happen here and there, and I'll talk through what those things are. But in large, we're not seeing a laundry list of items that we're bringing online as new initiatives. We've been very careful how we approach change management. Too much change at one time can break the system. We're not looking to break our system, we're just looking to enhance it and make sure that we're providing quality educational experiences for our students. So, in the Office of School Management, uh, we are going to bring online an internal grant opportunity to the tune of roughly forty thousand dollars to provide our teachers the opportunity to develop what we consider to be model classrooms. Why is this important? We use the Dan Houston Framework, that framework has been updated, that is the observation tool that we use, and one of the domains focuses on learning environments. The learning environment is absolutely important and critical for all, for all of our students' success. And we wanna incentivize our teachers in our district to go out, apply for this internal grant opportunity so that they can build up their classroom environments. They will serve as model classrooms for other teachers and also training grounds to help other educators learn how to build up a great learning environment for their students. We're also expanding two schools in the district. That will be the Cook Elementary School and POS. Both schools are going to include the sixth grade population for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That is also one of our strategies to help reduce the overcrowding that we are experiencing across our middle schools. The middle school that is experiencing the most overcrowding right now is Hubbard Middle School. Hubbard is overcapacity by roughly two hundred seats. Uh, we are also expanding our elementary school intramural sports programs, pushing down basketball, soccer, and a number of other programs because there is a growing need and desire for some of our students. From the Office of Instruction and Programs, we are moving forward with the, uh, an approval, a request through the Department of Education to allow us to implement a full-fledged English immersion program in our elementary schools. We've talked about this a great deal over the last few years, and the level of support that we need to help our multilingual learners gain English proficiency. We've prototyped this program at two elementary schools this year, at the Cook Elementary School and at Clinton Elementary School. And at this point, we are very satisfied with the results that we've received. Uh, the feedback from our coaches and the teachers has been outstanding. We believe it's time for us to rip off this Band-Aid and move forward with this full-fledged English immersion program. We will also continue to expand our CTE programs. We have Phase Two of the renovation projects that have to take place at Plainfield High School to allow us to bring our contemporary arts lab online. But we are continuing to build out and to add more programs. So in the area of allied health, which was pretty much the focus of the last board meeting when we brought our representatives from Apple, we're also now bringing online our sports medicine track that is associated with allied health. And we are also going to increase our ELA supervision and supports. I think everyone in this room knows, if our students cannot read, they cannot succeed. We've done a lot of work under the leadership of, of Mary Ann Tanker, who's here, hi, Dr. Tanker. Bringing the community together to actually be a part of our literacy initiatives. I think we've gotten great results, but now we have to just go a level deeper. I've had a conversation with our board president, Mrs. Wyatt, regarding our reading specialists. At this time, we have ten reading specialists across the district, right? Right, so, it's amazing, but it would even, it would be even better if those individuals were actually doing that type of work full-time, right? So, we have the, we have the team members with the certifications, but now we have to have a conversation about possible realignment and also leveraging professional services from some of the larger literacy collaboratives like Rutgers University that can come in and provide us with that additional support as well. So in the budget, you'll see, uh, there is an allocation, and it's really an either-or scenario. We wanna do what's gonna be most cost-effective and give us the best bang for our buck. We currently have Rutgers University, uh, working with one of our elementary schools, that is Barlow Elementary School. And we are closely monitoring the progress of that, of that, uh, that contract and that engagement. If we see the results that we hope to see from that, we will probably lean closer towards working and expanding on that collaborative as opposed to going out and hiring more FT as opposed to going out and hiring more FTEs. This is also, uh, I think going to provide us with an opportunity to grow our own reading specialists, right? And that will require us to obviously have further conversations with our partners at PEA to discuss, uh, how we can support our, uh, educators who may be interested in that opportunity. Uh, we've already talked about the expansion of our district pre-K. Uh, that will include increased early interventions and expansion of, uh, inclusive programs. We want to make sure that our students are not ostracized and they, they are provided with opportunities in a least restrictive environment. Sometimes that's a, a difficult conversation to have, because if I'm being honest, we sometimes put the label on our children and we treat them as if they're so fragile that they can't go out in the world and show up like everyone else. I will tell you, we see this time and time again, that under the right circumstances and with the appropriate supports, students who are put in inclusive environments, they go out and thrive and shine, and they show up and show out just like everyone else. And we want to provide more opportunities for our students to do so, but that requires us to have great partnerships with our parents, so that we're not moving in a direction that our parents are unwilling to follow us in. Uh, for our Office of Equity and School Improvement, we're leaning in, and we're ten toes down with our culturally responsive teaching and leadership initiatives. I'm also very proud to announce that we're moving forward with an outdoor equity program, and that, uh, is a direct partnership between the Office of Equity and School, uh, School Improvement and the Office of Instruction and Programs. Huge shout-out to Dr. Tristan Cox, who's in the back. I have to give him all the credit for this, this is his brainchild, something that he wanted to do, uh, providing our students with more, uh, immersive outdoor experiences, so that our students who, who live in Plainfield can go out and, you know, ride horses, right? Experience nature, do all of those things that they might not necessarily have the, the opportunity to do on a regular basis. But when they come to Plainfield Public Schools, it's our responsibility to provide them with such opportunities. We are also going to move forward with our building-based equity fellows and, uh, leveraging them to help us implement our restorative justice practices, right? Not suspending our students, moving forward with more, uh, compassionate supports, if you will. Uh, moving forward to the Office of HR. Ah, so, we've talked a lot over the last few years about reducing some of the costs for, uh, outside services and vendors that we've brought into the organization, right? That's, that's been a constant. So, guess what, we have a solution for it. And that solution is for us to launch our maintenance apprenticeship program in the district. And what that's going to allow us to do is, uh, take on some of our existing custodial staff members who want to become maintenance team members, right? And those are specialized positions for HVAC, uh, electrical, plumbing. And we're going to host our own, uh, in-house program to allow them to earn those certifications and then do that work for us here as employees in our district. I think this is also going to provide an opportunity for our students who, who want to see a pathway, an opportunity for them to be employed by Plainfield Public Schools. So thank you to Mrs. Jones and the Office of HR for, uh, having this conversation with the U.S. Department of Labor to get us rocking and rolling with this initiative. Uh, the Office of, uh, Business Operations, uh, major highlight there is that we're going to pro- continue to prioritize our emergency communications. Uh, that is a, a huge, 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 uh, priority for us. In the event of an emergency, we have to have reliable communications, and the team is taking a number of steps to get us there, and they'll be moving forward with Phase Two of this initiative in the upcoming school year. For the Office of Marketing and Communication, we're going to continue to expand and strengthen our communication platforms and tools that we've already rolled out for the community. We've seen some great results. Uh, you can look at some of that information a little further in the budget and brief document, but we are seeing great results across platforms such as Parent Square and also Let's Talk. In that Parent Square tool, uh, we're sending out, uh, a weekly newsletter that gets sent out to over twelve thousand, uh, stakeholders. Not just internally in our organization, but guess what? I got the email addresses, we send them to the charter school families too. We want everyone to know what's going on in Plainfield Public Schools. And the last piece here, uh, major initiatives, uh, under the Office of Information and Technology, we'll be moving forward with our Apple Vision Digital Learning Initiative. So the part that the board saw at the last meeting, that's really, uh, more of an equipment upgrade to help us further expand and enhance our CTE pathways. So that is directly connected to students and teachers in our CTE programs, but there's also another side of that initiative. We're also pushing, uh, our, uh, internal initiative and our target to have every one of our educators in our district become a, an Apple-certified teacher. So we are well underway with that initiative and look forward to, uh, even greater results next school year. So what are the key drivers, uh, for this budget presentation? The first being an increase of our, uh, in our charter school payments. Now, I spoke at the last board meeting, you know, there's, there's constant chatter about Plainfield Public Schools and the charter schools that are here in the community. I want to say, uh, one thing to everyone who's here and everyone that can hear my voice. Our job is to enhance the, the quality of the educational experience for our students who are here. And I think if we keep our heads down and focus on that, it's going to become even clearer, even clearer for everyone in the community what the best option is. We all know and understand that that option is Plainfield Public Schools, but by making these types of investments and really doing the work and building the systems, we are going to continue to show everyone exactly why Plainfield Public Schools should be the number-one option for public education if you want your children to have a great educational experience. But, again, the driver here being our charter school payments. We see that increase annually, and for everyone's understanding and edification, the charter schools do not get an, uh, approval for an annual increase, if you will. They have a five-year approval that shows the maximum number of students that they can support or provide education to, but that number fluctuates. It goes up and down during the course of the year, and our, uh, business administrator, along with his team, if there is a decrease in charter enrollment during the course of the school year, we claw back any additional money before we close our books for the fiscal year. And I want to tell you that there have been some instances where we've had to go out and collect checks for half a million dollars at the end of the year, because we put out money for, uh, charter schools to support a certain number of students, and they did not. Uh, another driver is the reduction of entitlement grants, and that's what I referred to earlier, as I talked about that fiscal cliff. So, uh, two, one rule of thumb for us here in our district, use grants to cover the cost of things, not to cover the cost of people. When you use grants to cover the cost of people, our personnel, you end up absorbing a recurring expenditure, right? And you're holding that together with a revenue source that can be pulled away at any point in time. So we've made a number of changes over the last few years to help, uh, help support us, but we'll continue to double down and make the, make even better efforts. Our tuition at out-of-district placements, uh, is another driver, and we're working diligently to, to reduce those costs. And the last, what I think probably most important is that, uh, we haven't had a tax levy increase in the last six school years. And ultimately, what that does, if you think about compounding interest, that's the reverse, right? So we've lost any compounded interest that we would have gained on the two percent, uh, tax levy increase over those six years. But, in all fairness, we had a great reason for not doing it. There was a windfall of cash that came from, uh, the feds from, for ESER. We also saw, uh, uh, huge increases that came from the state as well. And when you're in that situation, I will tell you, it, I don't think it ever makes sense to come to taxpayers to ask them to increase their taxes when you're receiving additional funding from state and federal, uh, sources. Alright, so going back to the revenue trend, uh, if I have my new balances on, I try to go run up those bar graphs to show you what it actually looks like with somebody jumping off the fiscal cliff. But I think we all, uh, have an understanding of, of what that looks like. So as our general fund operating budget has increased over the last five years, we're seeing the reverse happen for our special revenue. So if we were a school district that used special revenue to just go out and hire a bunch of people, we would be up here today talking about a massive reduction in force. But, because of the board members being active, going out to DC for the equity conferences, you all have been at the table when these conversations were taking place over the last two years, and you've brought those conversations back to us to make sure that we were being prudent and responsible as we plan for the districts, uh, the district spending. Here again is the local tax levy, and I know, uh, again, we haven't had a conversation about tax levy since I've been here in the district. I don't think any board member around this table, maybe, uh, Ms. Henry, as the long, longest-standing board member, may have had some conversation, but it's been, you know, it's been quite some time. So there are two scenarios that are, uh, again, being proposed and being presented. And I want to be very clear about what happens with selecting, uh, either one of the scenarios that are presented. So, Mr. Cox has presented the budget, uh, proposal with the, the generic two percent tax levy increase. Now, all of the things we talked about today, we can in fact accomplish them by just having a two percent tax levy increase and walking away. But, what that does, on the backend, it requires us to make a withdrawal from both the capital and maintenance reserve accounts, and they will be depleted. So that savings account that I talked about us needing to have over the course of the next few years, we will not have it. That is why we've presented to you, uh, Scenario One and Scenario Two. Either one of those options will allow us to maintain some of those savings in our reserve accounts, so that they are not depleted. And that is the difference in both of those scenarios. What we're really talking about here is not selecting Scenario One or Scenario Two, we have to make the withdrawals from those reserve accounts. And if we're likening it to our household budget, that's us taking the money that we usually have to the side for emergencies, uh, a roof repair, or uh, something happened to the car that you didn't expect was going to happen. Uh, things become very difficult when you don't have, uh, available funds to help support with future budgeting in that manner. And, uh, to talk about our next steps, and I'll pause for questions. We're here tonight for our review of our preliminary budget proposal. The next step would be to submit the preliminary budget to the county, uh, Executive County Superintendent, uh, for review and approval by March twentieth. We would then like to move forward with, uh, committee meetings, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Commissioner Johnson and his team to really continue to just have these conversations, right? In case there's changes that need to be made, additional considerations over the course of the next few weeks. And then going into the public hearing and the formal adoption of the budget. Tonight's, uh, and the deadline for the budget adoption is May fourteenth. So tonight's approval allows us to go out and submit what, what is a preliminary budget. The final adoption takes place April twenty-ninth, alright? Very important for, for us. So tonight is really the procedural aspect, making sure that we're in compliance. And I'll now, uh, move forward to any questions and answers, uh, to the Q and A session. So any questions, I have answers.
You got a question, go ahead, Commissioner Andrews.
First, I want to start off and say, and I thought it was well put together. Also want to address the fact, because I think last time, I did see the, uh, the fund balance that put us in the positive, and I did not publicly acknowledge, uh, the work that was done by Cameron and his department. Uh, with that being said, I'm, I, I, some questions I have kind of revolve around the local tax levy. I'm going to be one of the first to say that, I, I think I've been saying it to you for a number of times. This might be something that's a necessity, as much as we all dislike the idea of taxes. Unfortunately, I work in a district now in which they were not necessarily taking in enough taxes, and there was a lot of development taking place. And we've had, uh, significant reductions in, in workforce. I guess a part of my question then comes down to, um, how much of this additional revenue that we're raising, or needs to be raised, is a result of pilots or tax abatements? And, and the district in conversation with the city in terms of making sure that we're receiving those revenue funds? Again, just to point out some of the, the concern I saw, I'm going to highlight the district that I work for, but they were growing, um, commercially, residentially, but they weren't necessarily collecting revenue for that. And the state kind of got to a point where they were like, "You, you got to do more on your end first." So I'm wondering, like, ha- are we having that conversation? And I'm not sure you can answer that question, but how much of the budget is being affected by those abatements and the, the lack of revenue that's coming in as a result?
So, I can't answer that question. Uh, I don't have an answer for that question in terms of how much of the budget is being impacted by it. But if we think about that aspect of, like, the compounded interest and how that tax base grows over time, I would have to say, in my humble opinion, the entire budget is impacted by it. Because what you don't have, you don't have, let me go back to earlier presentation, slide. Alright, so the, you see, uh, the column that says valuation? The tax levy and what we receive as a school district is based off of that valuation number, right? The problem with that is that when you have a pilot program, that particular property's valuation is not included in that number, right? So that means when you, when the state does its total calculation for the tax levy and everything else they do to support us, let's say you have a property that is valued at thirty million. That's thirty million dollars that doesn't get included in that total valuation number. I would have to, you know, have a specialist come in and really look at the number of properties across the city of Plainfield and to find out the total value of those properties, but that certainly impacts the budget. And, uh, to my understanding, when there's a pilot program, the valuation for that property does not get added to this rolls until after the pilot program is done. So you're talking twenty, thirty years, alright? That's a long time. Many of, I don't think any of us are going to be here serving in these capacities when, when those, uh, uh, those rates get added to the valuation. So, there was one initial conversation that took place, uh, earlier this year, and I think the conversations need to happen, and they need to also happen in the public space, so that the community is fully aware what's happening. I would say from our perspective, we have to be clear on the advocacy and what we're saying we want. Now, I know that there's a few angles that can be taken when you talk about pilot programs. So there's the front end of what's negotiated in the terms, there's a community benefit that could also be included, but I don't think that's what we, what we necessarily need, alright? When you look at our organization right now, we know we need a schoo- another, another school. There's a new law that's been written, or it's on the books now, that would allow for, uh, any payments in lieu of taxes, they could be allocated directly to the school district to cover this ca- cost of a construction project. And we learned about that during, uh, research that, uh, we had, uh, uh, general counsel conducting, uh, and also our bond counsel. As we tried to think through options to get a new school built for us, we learned about that. And I truly believe that we have to be clear about what we're asking for, put it in black and white. But it has to be, I think, a collective effort. The conversation also needs to take place here, because I can't go out and jump out as a superintendent, leading that charge, without us having a conversation here saying, "Hey, Superintendent, this is what we need, this is what we asking for, go after it." And we literally sat around the table and, and carved out a couple of hours to really just talk about what that is, we can go out here and we'll go ahead and, and, and try to get that mission accomplished for us. But those are, are serious asks, and we have to be straightforward and, and, and go at what we're trying to get with this. Because we'll continue to find ourselves in this, uh, situation. It's not just Plainfield, it's happening up in, all up and down the state of New Jersey, and there are communities who are starting to organize around this also. You're also having conversations, uh, at the state level with some legislatures, right? Who also want to see a different approach to pilots, but nobody's really, nobody's been, nobody's really come and kicked the door open, right? And said, "No, you have to do this for school districts." I think they've pu- put us in a position where they're looking for us to collaborate and negotiate to get those things. So, it's a, it's a matter of us going out and saying, you know, what it is that we want, Mr. Andrews. Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, excuse me, may I pose a question?
I'm sorry, yes.
So, um, I want to thank Superintendent Sun and, um, his team also. Cameron Cox, wonderful job at presenting the budget, I really. Wonderful job at presenting the budget, I really appreciate the thoroughness and overview. So one, hold on one second. One of my major concerns, and I've been like, sort of like Paul Revere, like saying, like the economic cliff is coming, or the Ezra Cliff is coming, rather, since September 30th. Kind of talking about the federal money that we sort of like use for its facilities and instruction, and the fact that they're going to expire soon, and sort of like bringing that up and figuring out ways that, okay, how can a district still accomplish its goals with the strategic plan? But then also figuring out ways that, in light of the federal and state deficits here, that we can continue to the strategic, the goals, lofty goals that were set during the strategic plan. So my three biggest concerns is the fact that besides the Ezra funding no longer being available, the money for preschool expansion, the governor has said in no uncertain terms that he's interested in universal pre-K throughout the entire state. Plainfield has had universal pre-K for a very long time, but we're losing now money. I think it was somewhere around $4 million that's going back based on projected enrollment numbers. But when I see families in my neighborhood, I see that they still need this pre-K care for their three-year-olds. And when I look at the numbers, particularly the numbers from the pandemic, we see an increase in birth rates, right? Now, those in, those children who in 2020 were born, 2021, they now turn three. So I'm just trying to understand what's the district's sort of concerted effort and trying to make sure that we get that projected enrollment cut that we had. Is there a way that we can get that $4 million that we are potentially going to lose for the projected enrollment numbers? And the second thing that I'm really interested in is the Medicaid reimbursement that we're going to lose from the federal government. So I know the state does their reconciliation, or the budget, the state at the same time, they gave their address in February. There is a timeline they have for budget reconciliation. Is there any way that through the state's budget reconciliation process, we get to expand Medicaid reimbursement to make sure that we can accomplish the goals that we need for special education students?
Yes, so, great question. I'll start with the preschool education at, so you are correct in stating that we've had universal pre-K here for decades. And that's, that was a part of the landmark case, Abbott versus Burke. Right, that called for that here, we continue to receive the funding from the state to support that. The reduction that we're seeing, although unpleasant to see, to be transparent about this, the state probably should have reduced our funding for preschool education a few years ago. And here's why. When the pandemic hit, the preschools, every district was instructed to hold the preschools harmless, right? Meaning, if you receive the budget to support 200 students, but you only service 100 during that school year, school districts were informed, you have to still pay them the full amount. That went on for two consecutive fiscal cycles, right? If you recall, there are some instances where we came to the table, we had to talk about trying to get money back from some of the centers. That's why. So again, you have all these funds that were floating out there. It didn't come back to the district, it didn't come back to the state. We were ahead of this, we wanted to make sure we got things in order. So we were already working on this over the last two school years. The reduction that we see to the tune of roughly $4 million, that's because there are two, roughly 226 seats that are still open right now or unfilled in pre-K centers here in the city of Plainfield. And that is as recent as this week, looking at the seats and our enrollment numbers. And there is one center in particular that's received funding for, I can't remember what their total enrollment number is, but they're short 80 students right now, right? Think about that, 80 students. We've been in some, some pre-K centers, 80 students in a pre-K center, that's a whole school, right? So that, that organization has already received a huge portion of that funding, but they haven't been able to fill the slots. So this is a much larger conversation that's going to take place with our providers, who by the way, I think do a great job, right? But this is also about accountability and right sizing now, right? So we're going to change our process in terms of the contracts that we bring to the board with the enrollment numbers to make sure we're appropriately looking at trends over the last three to five years, looking at fill rates, et cetera, before we bring those contracts to you all. Our goal as a district is not to take seats from the providers. The state's made it very clear, they want the provider seats to be filled first, before they would ever give us the opportunity to expand and bring more students in district. So that aspect is taken care of. Now to get to the marketing component and to communicate, the marketing and outreach. We've, we are condensing our enrollment process. So we usually do a mass registration process that's really just been centered for kindergarten. That is going to be combined with pre-K. We're bringing that together to make it a one-stop shopping experience for our families. We have mailers that have been created that are going to be sent out to every household. And they're nice mailers, they're not the one that was brought to the board meeting, I think, a year ago. I remember that, we got some complaints about it. But it's really nice, speaks to the program and the supports that we have for families. And guess what? Each one of our providers, they have a dedicated staff member that is responsible for their community outreach to also go out into the community to help them reach their enrollment targets. So we are high level with the strategy, but they also have to have the boots on the ground because they're responsible for meeting the numbers that are listed in their contract as well, right? So, but it's not to put it on their backs, it's to just say that we have to work, work closely together. Because we want them to be whole, we want more students in those seats. We just have to, you know, figure out how we can fill some of those gaps in the areas that are having trouble. And you have one more question about?
So, I mean, I'm sort of very concerned about the Medicaid reimbursement cuts. That's been top of my mind since they, you know, the president has ruled out these cuts.
So semi has provided us as a school district with minimal, like, it's, it's to a point where some team members, I think Mr. Cox, Dr. Filippatos, wonder if we spend more-
Than it's worth.
Than it's worth because of the manpower that goes into submitting the forms and all of those compliance documents. When you think about the return that we get at the district, it's not a lot. I don't think we've eclipsed 200,000. I think we have projected this year somewhere like a hundred, a little less than a-
No, we, that was one of the areas, Mr. Hassan, that we were directly notified, we will not receive more than. If you look there, we will not receive more than $57,091. To put, to put that in perspective, the items that we have to thoroughly track, calculate, and then submit on a quarterly basis to the submission system that the state maintains is millions of dollars per quarter. And so if you just look at the trends, in '23, '24, we received the total semi reimbursement, which is the Medicaid reimbursement of $286,754. We got the same exact budgeted receipt for this year. And they've already told us, no matter what you do, you still need to participate. You still need to track millions of dollars per quarter. You will not receive for the year more than $57,000. And so yes, it does hurt to be cut, but we, we have a lead specialist that works in the Office of Student Services. The $57,000, now multiple people have their hand in this process. That does not even cover their salary, to put things in perspective for you.
Can I get you all your questions, sir?
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Madam President?
Any more questions? Okay.
So upon our approval, we'd be approving the budget, which includes the Position Control roster. If we have questions on any items on here, do we discuss it here or were we going to executive?
So-
If it's about a particular title of a position that we currently have, there are some vacancies in here, then we would need to go into executive session.
What I would say is if you want to discuss items that likely a person would know that you're talking about them, then it's personnel. If it's a basic conversation, then it has to be done in public.
If they're vac, if they're vacancies, that means there's no person in the role right now.
But if it doesn't say vacancy in front of it, if it's-
That means that that's a person, like the position is currently held by somebody.
And if there are questions about that, then we should go on executive, executive session under personnel.
Okay, before we do that, I just want to, I have a couple of questions, like one and a half. So first, thank you, Mr. Hassan. Thank you, Mr. Cox, for delivering this budget to us, explaining and articulating what it is that we need to understand to comprehend and approve this preliminary budget. We appreciate not having to look at a budget that is conducive of any layoffs. So we appreciate that, that's awesome. And we look forward to, like you said, bringing in more reading specialists and filling some of those vacancies that we know we currently have that we see month after month. Because we're trying to sustain this budget, which is a part of my question. We're trying to make sure that we can sustain this budget with everything that's going on at the national level and with the potential cut to the Department of Education. But at the same time, simultaneously, we're consistently looking to fill vacancies for teachers that we so desperately need, and other positions that we might need to provide the resources and services to our students. But it looks like we have a pretty, a pretty good budget. They say if you want to know the board's priorities, look at its budget, and you guys have done a great job, so I appreciate that. But I just kind of want to speak to the tax levy briefly, because I was at a town hall, and it was shared at that time that if the district needs any amount of money, then a portion of that money comes from the city. So there's a form that the district has to fill out, and I'm not sure if it's directly related to this tax levy. I don't know the exact name of the form.
It's the A4F form, yep.
Yes, okay. So that form, did we explore this option or have any conversations with the city administration regarding, and take that into consideration before we decided? I know we talked about having this conversation and making sure that, like, this is the right time to do it. I'm in agreement with it, but did we explore that option? And is there a particular amount that's involved in that option? And do we do that ahead of April? Or is that something that we do post approving the budget? How does that happen?
So I think when that, that's a great question, a perfect question. So if I'm going back to that town hall meeting, because I was there when that was stated, I think for that to be stated and there to not be any context or conversation was misleading. And here's why. Yes, it is true that whatever the district puts on the A4F form, the city has to provide that in the form of the tax levy, but it's not as clear-cut as that, right? Yes, if you go up to 2% on the tax levy, the board approves that. If you want to go outside or above the 2% tax levy, that has to be approved by the voters in the community. So it's not necessarily the board comes and says, whatever, right? If you're talking about just increasing the tax levy that way. The funds that we're talking about with this increase, these are taxes that we didn't claim over the last three years that have been collected. And it's called bank cap or the Unauthorized Tax Authority. So these are taxes that should or should have or could have been claimed by the district over the last few years, but we're not. We have in our estimated bank cap north of $50 million in uncollected taxes over the last three years. So this, under these circumstances, I wouldn't have, as a superintendent, necessarily gone to them to say, hey, the board, I'm going to be proposing to the board a tax levy increase that goes above the 2%, because that's not what we're doing. We're just trying to grab the bank cap portion, which is, it's a separate calculation, if you will.
That we already have access to.
That you already have access to, because you didn't use it over the last. And if you don't use it in a three-year period, it's lost forever.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to touch on, just like the idea of the U.S. Department of Education being dismantled. Like, I know we have a plan, and I know Commissioner Andrews speaks to it all the time about the sustainability of our plan and our budget and making sure that we can continue to do these things. But what are some of the ways that you're looking to ensure that we can increase our revenue into the district so that we can now kind of level things out? Because like you mentioned, after so long, if we keep pulling from a surplus or a bank cap or whatever, then we're going to deplete those funds. So how do we do that? And like I said, sustain that at the same time as we're trying to fill other positions, other vacancies that we need. It's not like we're just trying to add new positions, but fill positions that we currently need and still provide the resources and services to our students.
Got it. So, thank you for teeing me up for that one. I apologize in advance if anyone's feelings are hurt. Respectfully, as you look through our Position Control roster, you saw vacancies that are there, right?
I saw a few, yeah.
And the, what moves student achievement in the district is high-quality instruction. Having a high-quality teacher in front of every student. So we have certain supports that we put in place over the last few years, and they're constant in other school districts as well. You know, we have teacher coaches, we have instructional coaches, et cetera. What's the purpose of having a teacher coach if you don't have a teacher in the classroom to coach, right? So those are conversations that we're having now to make sure that we are right-sized in the organization and that our most critical positions or vacancies are filled first, right? By making those changes, some of those vacancies that we currently have listed right now, they will get filled by internal team members. That's just going to be the process that kind of plays out over the course of this year. Our, what costs us the most are people, right? Salaries, benefits, professional development that goes along with that, workman's comp if someone gets hurt. Like, there's so many things that we, we budget for and we appropriate that goes into people. It's very important for us as an organization to maintain a balance and a sweet spot so that we are not going out and hiring more people than we need to operate our system. So every opportunity where we can leverage using professional services, as opposed to going out and hiring an FTE, we're going to leverage that. So I mentioned whether or not we would use Rutgers to help support our literacy versus going out and hiring full-time equivalents. Those will bring immense cost savings to us. We're also looking at all of our programs. Our academic return on investment, that is extremely important for us. And our target is to have a 30% return on investment for every dollar that's spent. If we're unable to hit that mark, step one is to do a program redesign. We go through another cycle, step two, we will cut the program and reallocate those funds to another program that is more cost-effective for us. The last part, two pieces I want to add, is us having an entrepreneurial spirit. Like, I think that is extremely important for us as a school district. I've gotten beaten up about this over the last few years. I've heard from people, oh, as a superintendent, you just have, you, you think our school district is a business. It is, we're in the business of educating children, right? And just like every other organization, we have to have the proper revenue sources to make sure that the system can be sustained. We have great assets here in our district. Newly, newly constructed schools, newly renovated spaces. We have the ability to further leverage those assets to generate revenue for our school district with Rentrus, and Mr. Cox and his team is working on that. And there's a little give or take, because we also want to make sure that community organizations have access to use our facilities when they want to provide programming to our children. But there are also folks who are coming in from out of town who are saying, hey, that's a great auditorium over there. Yeah, we would like you to come over here and rent our auditorium so we can make a couple of thousand dollars over the weekend to put back into our general operating budget. And the last thing, Madam President, is not sitting around waiting for the State Department of Education or the U.S. Department of Education, if it's still around, to fund us, right? We don't want to be sitting with our hands in our pockets waiting. The board has also already approved the onboarding and award of a contract for a- for a, a, a firm to provide us with support to go after grants. Like, that is huge for us. We've, I think we've done a really good job over the last few years. We brought in over twenty million dollars in grant opportunities that we've also leveraged for some of the facility upgrades. We got grant, we've received grants through the New Jersey BPU, through their clean energy program. As long as those opportunities are available, we will go after those grant opportunities. But now bringing that firm in, that gives us, I think, an extra leg up to hopefully be very targeted with the grant opportunities that will come available and, and, and be online over the course of the next few years. What we're hearing federally is that grants, opportunities will still be available, but they will be coming down in the form of block grants, right? And block grants are supposed to provide more flexibility to the states, but state, the state would also have to provide guidance for us as a local education agency to allow us to go after those opportunities if that takes place. We haven't really received any information on that, so all I'm saying is we're preparing ourselves to go after the money wherever it is, right?
All right, I think that's it. Do we have any more questions outside of whatever questions we have for the position control roster? But do we have any other question?
I just wanna present maybe a point of clarification with the block grant. So some people may not understand what block grants are and why the Department of Education is so important, right? Can you explain the difference if they go from the current funding to a block grant funding? How that changes things for urban districts?
Yeah, so with that change of that structure, it is, if, if there are bad actors in the system, certain communities can be blocked out from block grant opportunities, if you will. And I think that's really important for us as a school district to be at the table. I think that's why the advocacy work is so important. Being at those conferences like the, uh, the Advocacy Institute, when it's time for these conversations to take place, that is, you know, NSBA is doing a great job of providing us information, but it will give us the guidance that we need so we can be proactive about such opportunities. But you also have to have, I think, the leadership at the state level to also make sure that your, your state is at the table and not necessarily on the menu. So we've had, you know, a lot of conversations about what's happening on the federal level. All politics are local. Keep in mind that, that we are also moving forward in the state of New Jersey with a gubernatorial election that's coming up, right? So we don't know who the governor of New Jersey will be and whether or not the gu- that governor would be aligned with what we're seeing coming down to us from Washington, right? So there's a lot of unknowns and uncertainties. And we'll just continue to look for the information as it comes available. But for any grant opportunities that are available, uh, that we know of, we're gonna aggressively pursue those opportunities.
Just a clarifying point, if you could clarify for me, but you had mentioned that the options that you presented for the local tax levy, can you go back to that slide? Thank you so much. So would all thre- three require voter approval? If it, did they go to the voters or just?
None of them.
No. Over the above, over above the two-point-five percent tax cap?
So none of these require voter, voter approval? Because the base tax levy, we're only looking to go to two percent. But the, the funds above that, we're looking to grab some of the bank cap. Go to the taxes that were not collected in prior years. So that would not require a, a voter, voter approval. But if we were saying, hey, we wanna, we wanna increase the tax levy by four percent, that would require a vote from the voter, but we're not asking for that.
So, and there's another point. So what you're saying is that the tax collection was already there, right? So the, whatever money that was needed already to fund, fund an increase, right? Was already there.
Yeah, it was there, but we haven't raised taxes on the school district side for the last six years. And because we didn't raise it, the state does a calculation that says, hey, based on your budget, this is what, what, what you've gained because there's a difference between the local adequacy funding that we're supposed to provide, what the state gives us, and it runs a calculation that shows taxes that could have been collected but were not collected by the school district. And then you have a three, a three-year window where you can look back and use those uncollected taxes with board approval. And over the last three years and include what will be generated this year, it is close to fifty-seven million dollars in uncollected taxes from the Board of Education. You're welcome.
Any more questions? No? No more question? Okay.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to allow for a public comment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Smith and Gray that the board now amend the agenda to move public comment to this time. You've heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carried. At business meetings, privilege of the floor will be provided for thirty minutes for the public prior to committee reports. Members of the public in attendance will have the opportunity to raise concerns during this period of the meeting. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of three minutes by the clock. This time is not transferable from one individual to another. Privilege of the floor is now open.
All right. Do we have anybody that's present in person that'd like to come? You can go up. No, he's just fixing the mic, getting the mic. You can go. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Lourdes Lourdes, and I am a resident of Plainfield. My daughter attends pre-K here. She's in, um, I don't get too specific about that kinda classroom. But I do wanna make a point, um, one, in the year 2025, there are no inclusive pre-K classrooms in Plainfield. How I know? That's my struggle with my child, and I'm strongly considering pulling her out somewhere else for her to get it. But I just wanna throw that on the record. But, um, that aside, the real question that I have, 'cause I'm also a member of CPAG, the Special Education Parent Advocacy Group, but I'm not asking as a, as that person, but as a mom that has a four-year-old in district. So with the budget cuts, I really, really, the budget cuts to special education matters to me 'cause it's a struggle. That's, that's not even the right word, to get services, et cetera, et cetera. So the budget cuts proposed to special education, can you elaborate on it? And/or have you guys already identified what will be cut? How will it affect the children and everything around that?
We are, we're not proposing any cuts to our special education programs.
There was no reduction in the budget at all?
We're not reducing any of our costs. The only thing we're trying to do is keep students in for our out-of-district placements, but we are not proposing any cuts across our special education program. And so reducing those costs, that means instead of having a student go out of district and us pay maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for them to an out-of-district school, we're working to keep the student in district. Those are the only changes that we continue to push for, but no programmatic cuts.
But wouldn't you have to expand more in what we offer here for those, to bring those kids in district?
We would, depending on what the need is for the particular student. So every student's circumstance is different based on the IEP. We are opening specialized programs across some of our schools. I don't wanna say the type because we wanna get away from labeling. That's what I've been told to make sure we don't do. So we are expanding the programs, and if there are opportunities for us to bring students back, we will. But each one of those is a different case depending on the IEP.
Yeah, totally. So when I prefaced it, I started by saying how there are no inclusive preschool classrooms. That's wild. So even my daughter does not have the opportunity to participate with.
Got it. And now, so I can explain to you why that's been the case. And your daughter is at, your child is at what school?
Washington.
Washington, okay. So Washington has been one of the schools where we have, uh, our PSD classrooms. And, and prior years, uh, what I talked about was that we have providers in the community. Our share of the children that we've supported in pre-K programs in our in-district classrooms have only been students in PS, in the PSD program. We haven't had general, uh, classrooms to make that inclusion connection because those students in prior years, they've all been out in the centers. So that is why you, the circumstance that you're talking about, and that's, I'm not justifying it. I'm just telling you that that has been a structure that's been in place. But now that we've gone out and we've sought approval to have seats, and we've been granted that, it gives us the opportunity to work on that. We didn't have that opportunity in the past because we were never approved as a school district to actually operate general education pre-K programs. That's something that the, the centers, uh, in the community, they only had the approval to do that. If we wanna do, to open up a classroom today to service students in the general education preschool program, we have to submit an application to the Department of Education for them to grant that approval for us. We submitted an application for next school year to be able to support up to three hundred students. They only gave us the approval for one hundred and fifty-five. This allows us to do, now do what you're talking about now, is have those, that inclusion model in our pre-K program, that classroom that we run and operate as a district.
Okay. And I also wanna note that at the centers, none of the teachers are sped teachers. I don't know if y'all know that. They're not.
So I'm gonna, I have our team member, Dr. Filippato, chief, she's right there. But I would like her to talk to you to get some details from you, if you don't mind sharing, so we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I apologize, uh, you mentioned there's some struggles. I wanna know what those are so we can get that resolved. I truly apologize.
I mean, I'm here now. I mean, I joined the committee to advocate for children behind her so that they don't have that walk, but, um, yeah, it hasn't been pretty.
So we wanna make sure that it is pretty, and again, I apologize.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that's present in person that would like to come speak? Nick, while we wait for her to walk up, do we have many people online that need to? Okay. We'll finish in person and then we'll go to online. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robbie Campbell-Lassad. I'm also a member of the CPAG and a parent of two children with special needs. Can you bring back the budget for a second? 'Cause you had the, 'cause it was a little confusing.
Which slide?
Yes, the slide. Um, the one, because she, it was the one with the special education, not this. One more?
Uh, one more?
This one that says special education, I saw. Right? So this is probably where it's.
This is probably where it's a little confusing because you have twenty-five, twenty-six, thirteen million? And then you got twelve-point-five, so it looks like it's being reduced.
Got it.
Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
So what you're seeing on this slide is an analysis of the revenue. So the district receives revenue from the state is broken down into various categories. So while the district received an overall increase in state aid, across the categories, they reduced it, right? So when we get this special education categorical aid, it goes into the general fund, all right? So if we move forward to.
Let me just, I wanna stay right there for just a moment, right? 'Cause it is confusing this. All right. So that's why it's confusing to us as CPAG members because we see this line and it appears that it's one-point, what, five-million-dollar reduction? So you're saying it goes to a general fund? I'm still trying to understand it.
Yep. If you allow me to move forward, I'll give it to you. So if you look at our appropriations, the appropriations are what we project and plan to spend. So if you see here, the line that says student services slash guidance, you will see there's a thirteen-point-six-five percent increase. If you go down below that, you will see the Child Study Team, which we all know is special services. There's a six-point-eight-eight percent increase. So across those two appropriation lines, which specifically align to special services, we see on average, if you average those, that's almost a twenty percent increase that we're looking at across those lines. So while it, it may show that on the category in terms of the revenue analysis, we're not reducing anything as it relates to our appropriations and what we're projecting to spend. We're actually projecting to spend more money across the, across the categories for special education. So I apologize if that was a confusion anyway.
It is confusing. It's, it's kinda convoluted because Child Study Team could be increasing, um, I guess, personnel. And I guess our concern is more the services that students receive. For instance, speech or OT.
Yeah, OT services, et cetera.
Are they adequately supported? And so in this program appropriation, it's very, it's not really clear to a member of, a parent with special needs. So I guess that's why it's confusing 'cause on one slide it looks like a loss, and on this one it looks like a gain.
Understood.
Okay. There's one more question.
That was your, that was your three minutes, man.
Oh, you only got one question?
No, it's, it's three minutes. That was your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to extend our time.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Vice President Webb to extend, uh, the speaker's time. You've heard the motion. Are you ready for the question?
Thank you.
There being none all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. So it was mentioned, um, where you can get other sources of revenue. And I think you were talking about grants, which I think is great. Have you looked at endowments as well? Because they have a better spend return on investment versus grants that are sometimes time-sensitive?
So we actually have, and I think, uh, for us as a school district to properly manage that, we need to have the right structure set up, and that usually takes place in the form of a foundation. We do have some conversations that are ongoing right now to establish one of those for Plainfield Public Schools. So yes, but I didn't wanna speak prematurely about it because we don't have that, the structure in place yet. But that is something that we're working on.
Okay. That was my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that advice. It's good.
Do we have anybody else in person?
Good evening, everyone. Catherine Balch, thirteen-fourteen Highland.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for this presentation, Mr. Hassan and Mr. Cox. I, I, I wanted to address the comment that you made about the charter schools that, um, as we know, for every child that goes to a charter school, that amount of money is subtracted from the public school budget. Um, and that it, um, and that one of the ways that we could maybe prevent that from happening, that parents choose that for their child, is to make our district the best possible place for children to be educated. And, um, and I think that over the past three years, two or three years, that we have made significant strides towards that, that, uh, I think there have been improvements in many, many areas. Um, now with the, with the budget, um, with the money being reduced that we're getting from different sources, and you're trying to find places where we can make up for that, are, um, really working, it looks like you're really working hard to do that. So thank you so much for all your work and for the board, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the public before we move on to? Okay.
Nick, we can go online for the first person.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, good evening. My name is Sherman Nivara. I'm one of three, um, co-leaders for Plainfield CPAG, and I have two questions. And we, you mentioned that the special education, um, programs and services will not be reduced under the new budget, but it will expand. Is the district willing to provide details on how it plans to expand special education programs, classrooms, and services under the new proposed budget? Um, that's my first question. And my second question goes to the revenue analysis slide. Um, there's a section where it says medical reimbursement. Is that, um, considered the reimbursement for Medicaid?
Were those the only questions?
Yes.
So yes, that is considered the reimbursement for Medicaid that the district receives for services provided that are above and beyond. services provided that are above and beyond normal services that would be provided for a student. We are definitely willing to partner and share any information regarding any expansion of our special education programs, but I just want to preference that by stating, we are currently in the process of conducting an audit, and we want to ensure that we are utilizing the audits, that we, the audit recommendations that we receive as it relates to our special education program and accountability, and our, in the, in our compliance with IEPs to help us drive those decisions. So I don't want to speak prematurely because that audit is still underway. I want to thank the members of CPAC for working with our team and partnering. I know that the relationship hasn't been the strongest, but we are committed to ensuring that we enhance that. And you'll be able to access this document that I'm holding up in front of me, which is called the Budget in Brief. And I would ask that you, when you access the document that you refer to page twelve and thirteen, because it has a little more details and some highlights, particularly about student services, that I think you'll, you'll find helpful, particularly as we go into more detailed conversations with the CPAC meetings. There are some things that you all have asked for, and Mr. Gray has also advocated for, and we've made sure that we put allocations and appropriations in the budget to cover those things. And some of those things were specific to direct fiscal support for the CPAC group. So we have an appropriation of estimated ten thousand dollars to help with programmatic supports and supplies for the upcoming fiscal year. Know that we've been able to provide some of those supports for you, but there are some things that you all want to do to expand your reach in the community, and we want to make sure that we partner to help support that. But in total, our investment in non-salary costs for our special education program are estimated at twenty-seven point two million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And again, I'll ask the Dr. Filippatos, as we continue to go through the next round of conversations, because we'll be having committee discussions simultaneously, I would ask that you and your team take the charge and, in parallel, have some conversation with the CPAC group so that they are aware and well-versed of everything that we're rolling out as we get more info.
Thank you so much. And I just, if I may, just clarification, because I do see here under medical reimbursement, as you mentioned, that is Medicaid. Twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the district did receive two hundred and eighty-six thousand, a little bit more than that. But for the upcoming school year, we will only receive fifty-seven thousand. That's a huge cut, an eighty percent, a little bit more than eighty percent cut in the budget being received by Medicaid reimbursement. And you stated that there will be no reduction in the services being provided?
Yes, that's correct. So I think, as I explained earlier, so what you're looking at is the revenue analysis, right? And we have a general operating fund, right? All of the funds that we receive, unless it's, was considered a special revenue, all of our funds go into the general operating budget, then we as an administration propose how to use those funds, right? So that means if we only receive ten million dollars in special education funding that went into the general fund, that doesn't mean that we can only spend ten million dollars on special education. We can utilize the revenue that we receive from the tax levy and other sources that all fall into that bank to use and, to allocate towards funding our special education programs. And that's what we've done to make sure that we don't see any reduction there. Those are our most vulnerable students. The area that we want to continue to work at making reductions in are really our out-of-district placements. And, and those are a circumstance in which we are confident that we can provide the appropriate services and supports for a student. We would never try to encourage a parent to bring their child back into our district if we weren't confident that we can support them and meet their needs. But outside of that, there are no reductions in the level of support or programs for our students who receive special services. We are trying very hard to enhance the services that are being provided.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next person, Nick?
Justin who?
Mr. Gentles?
Yes.
Okay.
Justin Gentles, Plainfield, New Jersey. I guess our question will first, you know, thank you for everyone put the budget together and then took the time to present it to us. My question is just, what can families expect and or prepare for as it relates to this budget? So for example, you know, there's less funding for transportation. So does, for families, does that mean, you know, less, less bus stops or less cost trip transportation? So what does this budget mean for families? How can they expect and or prepare for with some of the reductions or less funding? I won't say reduction, but not as much funding coming in?
Yeah, so what families can expect is for us to continue to enhance the services that we provide, because again, while the revenue analysis for transparency purposes may show that there's a reduction in a particular category, there is no reduction in the overall budget, right? There's additional funding. We, we have more revenue that came in last school year from the state. We just, for whatever reason, the state made some reduction across categories, and we've compensated for that in the budget that we've developed. So as a parent, you will not see reduction in after-school programs. You will see more. You will see an investment for STEM programs estimated at six hundred thousand dollars. You will see professional development that's provided to educators to help them become more culturally responsive. You will see additional funding to the tune of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars allocated towards programs that'll help remove barriers in access for participation for our students. You will see increased enhanced extracurricular activities that will be brought online to support the growing needs of our students. You'll see a one million dollar investment in literacy and reading supports. You'll see a new curriculum materials estimated at three point four million dollars. We'll see the full immersion English program with an estimated price tag of one point three million dollars. So I want to just say, rest assured, unless the state is calling us next month telling us they're going to take twenty-five million dollars from us, we're in a very good position, a great position, I would say, to continue to provide the services we've provided in prior years, but now working on enhancing and fine tuning those. And for any parents, go ahead, Mr. Gentles.
Would you attribute that to being physically responsible in previous years?
Yes, that's played a huge part in it. I would also add to that, you know, when you bring a new initiative or program online, after it's been in place for a year, you have an opportunity to now go in and fine tune it and work out the kinks. Sometimes you realize in the process, you hired more people than you needed. Sometimes you realize that that program that you purchased might have cost twenty-five thousand dollars, there's a company that provides the same service for twelve, right? So we're constantly going through improvement cycles, finding ways to, I would say, reduce our expenses as an organization because we understand the situation that we're in. We are heavily dependent on state funding. And at any, if at any point the state of New Jersey is not in a fiscally sound position, guess what? We won't be in a fiscally sound position. So we're all looking a few years ahead. And again, I want to thank our business administrator, Mr. Cox and his team, for keeping us in that position, allowing us to do the great things in the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gentles. Nick, do we have anybody else?
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Laura Miranda Brown, thirteen fourteen Highland Avenue. I have a bunch of questions, and I will try and make them as quick as possible. My first is that I want to ask from, to this moving forward instead using the average, we look at the median tax impact. I think that'll be more useful to people as they look at this, as the, as you know, the averages can swing either high or low. And I think that would help us better understand as taxpayers, what this thing actually looked like when it hits our tax bill. But Mr. Hassan, you've asked us to look at this budget in the same way that you look at our household budgets, and I think that means we should go line by line for it and see what we can cut, right? As a parent to his, this district, I think it's important that we continue to focus on quality education and improving programs, getting what they need. But flip side, it's very difficult to be prepared for informed questions when this, when the supporting documents for this presentation were not available prior to the meeting. And thank you for saying that the budget brief will be made available after the meeting, but I'm hopeful that the entire budget will be posted so we can see what effect. Together with that, I'm wondering if you can please provide the following to the community as well. Breakdown, how much of this little budget comes directly from federal government funds? And then how much is, I mean, directly from the state in numbers-wise, as you, as we've all talked about? Department of Education is waiting a lot. Hopefully it will still exist, and if it doesn't, what, what does that really look like for a district like ours? As we've all said, if, if New Jersey tomorrow or next year, the governor decides to cut twenty-five million dollars from our budget, that's a twenty-five million dollar hole that we are all going to have to pay for in our taxes, right? So having that conversation in advance and being honest about what that looks like for us is probably an important thing to start to do now. Together with that, it would be very helpful to have a bull break down by the project of the facilities upgrades that are planned, as long as a timeline, when those things will be executed. It would also be helpful to understand for those budget, for those projects that have recently been completed, what the proposed budget was and what the final spend was. That, that will also be helpful to us to understand what the impact of tariffs and increased costs have looked like over the last few years. And then lastly, the question around these new proposed programs, while they sound great, it would be very helpful to know exactly what you mean by in the district rent. How much for classroom? How much for teacher? Is it capped? For building? Is it capped? By department? Is it capped? By grade level? Any sort of information you can give on that would better help parents understand what that looks like and how much that's going to cost us would be great. How much does the entire Apple program cost to us? How much goes to headsets and stuff last month going to cost us? And how much does it cost to repair a speakership? Everybody else's kids are like mine, very great. Very impressed. And we've got headsets that are proven to be family use. And lastly, at this raise that we're adding a ramp, or that a ramp was requested throughout Steinfield to the visitor section, but again, if we are looking at increasing property taxes by considerable amount as a result of the needs of this budget, having three quarters of a million dollars spent on a ramp for visitor teams, yes, seems a little silly to me. Why can't the third team guests just use the existing and the gap accessible spaces? Those are a lot of questions. Thank you for letting me go through quickly.
Thank you. That, so that was a lot.
We need another title added to the budget to do all that.
So I think with the exception of the timeline for capital projects, every other piece of information will be included in the full proposed budget document. The next step after tonight, the board provides approval for the preliminary budget. There is a full detailed document we're required to provide that and make it available to the public within forty-eight hours of it being approved, right, Cameron?
Yes, sir. And it has to be posted online when there's a website applicable, which we currently use, as we did last year, once the budget is ratified, within forty-eight hours. The full user-friendly budget, itemizing revenues and appropriations, including staff members that are non-affiliated, not a part of a bargaining unit, and make more than seventy-five thousand dollars a year, will be available online for everyone's perusal.
Maybe we need to just make sure that the public understands the process of which it takes for you all to build out this budget and provide it for the preliminary hearing so that they understand that certain things are produced after the fact?
Yeah.
And that you give them what you can in advance of this particular part so that they know, understand for future reference.
Yeah. And I think we can work on providing that, but tonight, so you see a presentation that has a few slides.
Can I just add, Mrs. Laura Miranda Brown also had another question about her opinion on what evaluation we should use. I want to state that the tax impact, whenever a district is considering raising taxes, not only the function form and formula comes directly from the state to inform your taxpayers prior to the board being able to consider any increases in taxes. So that is not something that Mr. Cox or the administration came up with. That is a mandated form that comes from the state of New Jersey. We plug in, we do get information from our local tax assessor, total land evaluation, et cetera, but that formula and form comes directly from the state.
Thank you. So the presentation, the slideshow, I hear high level, but also has details in it. On the backend, the document that I referenced earlier, that is simultaneously being worked on. However, that information is not published until there's approval for what's considered to be the preliminary budget. Once that approval is made, all of the supporting documentation that supports this proposed budget that's being presented in the form of a PowerPoint presentation and the supporting documentation, such as the brief and position control rosters, that then becomes available to the public and gets posted on the district's website. That is a requirement in statute and administrative code, and we are always compliant with that. We will make sure that when it's posted, we will send out communications, post on the district's website, utilizing Parent Square and Student Square as well. Parents and community members can also expect to be invited to budget presentations for their local schools. So here, we're having a conversation about our budget at the district level. Keep in mind that every school has a budget also. And as a parent, if you have children enrolled in any school, I think it's very important for you to show up to that meeting so that you can hear from your principal regarding their plans and their vision for, for their spending for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
All right. Nick, do we have anybody else online?
That was the motion to close.
Do we have anybody else?
Motion to close, public call.
We have another person for public call.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Richard Wyatt, five fifteen, Wachang Avenue. First, I would just like to change the temperature in this room really quick. You guys did just win the state championship, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So I see everybody down. You guys are magicians right now. So being, presenting this balanced budget, right? We still have new programs coming in. There is no cuts, no layoffs, those things, and you still have to battle with the pilots and also the expansions of charter schools. What was the number for the payout for charter schools this year?
Sixty-seven point three million.
Okay. So these two topics here, the pilots, I know that you've asked for conversations as well. I know that a resolution was passed saying that the board and the administration would sit down and be involved with those negotiations. I know as far as the charter schools, you asked for a moratorium and also a conversation with all of the leadership within the city of Plainfield. Those two things have not happened yet. But for Mr. Cox and the superintendent, Rashawn K. Hassan, for you two to, and the administration to come together and present a budget like this, where we are still moving the Plainfield Public School District forward, is something that should be celebrated, right? So you're doing an amazing job. Mr. Cox, you did an amazing job with the presentation as well, all of the staff here. So let's stop beating ourselves up. We have to start controlling the narrative here in the Plainfield Public School District. We are doing the work. You upgraded the facilities, that's retaining the children. You are making sure that you have the right people in the classroom, you're bringing in the right leadership. So just take a moment, look, everybody's down in the room. It feels like we had a funeral, had a repast or something like that. This is time to be celebrating the Plainfield Public School District and the job that you all are doing. The leadership here is phenomenal and amazing. Everybody works hard consistently, over and over again, and you always continue to get over the hurdles and the obstacles. So just take a moment, smile, give yourself a round of applause, give yourself a hand for doing this here. For real, I'm serious about that. And that's the way that we have to continue to lead, but we do have to make sure that we have those conversations on the city side with all of the leadership. Uh, but we do have to make sure that we have those conversations on the city side with all of the leadership, because what are we gonna do soon? You said it was what, two years from now? We won't have enough seats in the school district?
Actually, we're there now.
We're there now?
Yeah, and you know, to the point, the point you just made, this is, it's, it's not an issue that's just unique to Plainfield. As an SDA district, we rely on the New Jersey School Development Authority to build new schools for us. They can only build new schools when they are approved for bonding through the legislature, right? As a school district, SDA status, we don't have the ability to go out and bond, right? That's, that's a funding mechanism that stripped away from us because of the law that's written for us as SDA districts. So we have conversations, we're saying we need a new building. That's a price tag of at least eighty million dollars to construct a new building from the ground up. Now, questions start to roll in, well, how do you fund a project like that? If the organization that's supposed to build schools isn't approved for funding. So it's, it's really nuanced, so to your point, we have to have those conversations, because if we don't, we'll just be sitting around waiting and hoping that things happen for us.
Okay, and I'm reclaiming my time too, that, that three minutes, don't put that in.
I only took, I only took forty-five seconds.
Um, okay, so, um, I guess we just have to make sure that we keep applying the pressure and asking for those conversations. And, um, the advocacy, like you said, that's so needed right now. And, um, but just again, to everybody in this room, everybody that's here, um, you all have been doing an amazing job. And I also would like to say before I leave, uh, this is Women History Month, so all the women in the room, thank you for your leadership and, um, you as well, nice meeting you. Um, yeah, so that's it, bud. Congratulations, man, this is a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Warren. All right, is that it? Do you have anybody else? Okay.
Motion to close, public comment.
Second, been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Vice President Webb to close public comment at this time. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right, motion carried.
All right, now I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of questions regarding the position control roster, which essentially is our list of all personnel.
Second.
Was that, uh, who was the motion?
Commissioner Andrews.
Andrews. It was properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Hembry, that the board now retire into executive session for the personal purpose of discussing personnel through the position control roster. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right, motion carried. Uh, the board anticipates being in executive session for twenty to thirty minutes.
It's been properly moved, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Vice President Webb that the board now resume this meeting in the public. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carried.
Motion to... So what I would need from the board is consideration of the two scenarios so that I know how to proceed. That choice and subsequent resolution for which scenario to choose would have me then do a quick calculation to adjust and read another resolution on tonight's agenda relative to the withdrawal from capital and maintenance reserve.
Get the scenarios on the screen?
Nick? Can you put the slide with the scenarios on the screen, please?
Yeah, just for public.
Keep going. It's, I believe, slide eight or slide 22. There you go. Back up. Yep, there you go. There you go. Just as a reminder to the board, in the spirit of transparency, the gray is already into the budget. Scenario one and scenario two, as Mr. Hassan exclaimed, helps us to protect our savings accounts because as we know, we are on the fiscal cliff and we cannot ensure under current federal, under all federal and state funding that we will have that money in perpetuity. And so the recommendation is scenario one or scenario two to help us stabilize. Scenario one is the 2% that is already in the budget with a $15 million increase garnering from bank cap, which would yield an average tax, yearly tax increase on the average assessed home of $1,390.37. Scenario two is the 2% that is in the budget plus a 9% withdrawal from cap, from bank cap, excuse me, which would yield an $853.01 increase on the average assessed home in the city of Plainfield pursuant to the portion of their taxes that is attributed to the local school levy tax.
Just because a, there was a, someone in public comment mentioned this, is it possible to get the median right now based upon?
So when that comment was made, Mr. Gray, the state is very clear on the guidance on how you do this when contributing to the, to a Board of Education. The formula, form and spreadsheet that we use would have to be a tax, a supporting document that I submit to the county. They specifically want to see the calculation, yes.
Okay. Do you know how many homes were considered?
That is, that is information that is garnered at the local tax assessor's office. We are only required, for purposes of this calculation for a Board of Education, to get what your current tax levy is, which is what you see at the, at the top in the white. We are required to get the total valuation of all property in a municipality or city, the current tax rate, the current assessed, average assessed home, the average tax impact and the net change.
You know, just again, having considered all the options out there, go ahead and break it open. I think scenario two probably presents itself as the best, doesn't strike at too much of a change for taxpayers. Again, nobody likes to pay taxes, but the reality is, is that if we don't make some appropriate corrections at our level, it could come back to bite us later on. So I'm in favor of scenario two.
We could, we could do a motion if the board would like, and then I could do the calculations, complete two or three entries on the use of bank cap. And then I would read that into the record as a part of the ratification of the preliminary budget. Is there a second to Mr. Andrews's?
Second.
Can I, can I pause a question?
Can you pause a question?
Yeah, I just want to pause a quick question. So I know the state is sort of going through, or will go through its budget reconciliation process. If they happen to find, you know, because we're dealing with a surplus on a state level, if they happen to find more money, right? Does it sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? Does it?
Do we get extra funds?
Does it, does it sort of take away from us, like voting here for the tax cap increase, right? Does it nullify, that's the word I'm looking for, does it nullify?
No, so generally, it has been my experience that when the state does realize a mid-year surplus, what they will do is do immediate impact grants, one of which is one of the grants that Mr. Hassan spoke about, about being aggressive and going after additional funds. They had a, most recently, an emergent capital maintenance or construction improvement grant. And the district was able to, I do not have the number right in front of me, I believe it was roughly $1.3 million that we were able to fill out the paperwork for and receive that grant mid-year. So that's generally when a state realizes, hey, our revenues are up higher at the midpoint than we anticipated them being, that's how they usually disperse it, when they do disperse to the schools, because they can also elect to send that money to higher ed, they can elect to invest that money into infrastructure improvements for the state, there's, there's different places where they can.
So we got to put together before the motion for scenario two, adopt scenario two for our budget.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Mr., Commissioner Andrews. The board move forward in this budget with scenario two. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you for that. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Hembry. I, I just want to be clear for transparency, I'd call the role on this one, and I'll go in order. Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hembry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dr. Harris? Commissioner Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Is that yes response or a yes and affirmative to scenario two?
Affirmative, scenario two.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Webb?
Yes.
Commissioner President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. The yeses have it. There are seven yeses, one no and one absence. All right, so the board just gives me two seconds, I can fill out this use of bank cap really quickly.
So it's a whole separate place.
All right, I'm just going to read the resolutions as it relates to tonight's agenda. And so we already have the, the change will now yield for the tax levy increase. I'm sorry, I didn't do that calculation. Two seconds. The tax levy increase on the first resolution, not increase, excuse me, the total tax levy will now yield scenario two, which will be $35,538,910.88 plus the debt services of $1,125,328. For a total tax levy of $36,664,238.8, excuse me, and 80 cents, pardon me. Additionally, the travel reimbursement related expenses will not change, but I do have to read in the withdrawal from maintenance and capital reserve. And those resolutions will read, and the use of bank cap, pardon me. So the use of bank cap, the resolution will now read, this will be walk-on item, it'll be listed at number three. Be it resolved that the Plainfield Board of Education includes in its proposed budget the adjustment for bank cap in accordance with NJAC 6A:23A-10.1B. The district has fully exhausted all eligible statutory spending authority and must increase the base budget in the amount of $9 million for the purpose of meeting operating expenses. The district intends to complete said purposes by June 2026. And for maintenance and capital reserve, be it resolved that as per NJAC 6A:23A-14.2D, the general fund appropriations include a $1 million withdrawal from maintenance reserves and a $1,100,000 reserve, withdrawal from capital reserves on required maintenance and capital projects for a school facility project as reported in the comprehensive maintenance and comprehensive long-range facility plan. All right, those are the applicable resolutions that I've read into the record. The withdrawal from maintenance and capital reserve will be item four on the agenda, walk-on item number four, resolution number four, excuse me. And now I'm just going to go back to the main agenda. With that said, is there a motion to approve the tentative 2526 budget with the stated four resolutions?
I make a motion.
I mean, a second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Andrews that the board now approve the tentative 2526 budget with the stated motions accompanying the budget. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? Ready for the question?
Yes.
Yes.
There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right? Are there any no's that need to be noted? There being none, motion passed, the tentative budget has been approved and authority to advertise to the county has been granted.
Motion to adjourn?
It's been, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Smith to adjourn this meeting in the public. Heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor? All opposed have the same right? Motion carried, meeting adjourned at 10:05 PM.